Very short period of time, so congratulations for finding us. And hopefully this will be very interesting. Let me briefly run through what our planned agenda is. Welcome. Marion Chong is our research -- planning and research director at ABAG. She's going to give us an introduction. And then we're going to have presentations from HCD Lisa Bates, from Department of Finance, Walter Schworm, and Bill Schooling, and from ABAG, Steve Levy, who did our projections. And we'll then have a time for question and answers, both from any board members as well as the public. So again, welcome. We're looking at our population projections, obviously part of our planning efforts in planning the Bay Area, as well as our RENA allocations and other things that we do. So what we hope to hear from today are how these projections are arrived at, what are their differences, if there are any, and how they're used. If there's some confusion about which numbers are used or what, and hopefully we'll all be a little clearer when we're done today. So, Marion?
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. There was two people I forgot to introduce, and that is our MTC chairman, Amy Worth, who's here as well, and ABAG vice president Julie Pierce. So on behalf of all of us, welcome.
Thank you. Bye. I understand just one of us at a time can talk at once. We can only imagine. That's what the staff instructed us. Thank you for being here. Presently, as indicated, there has been some conversation about how the various efforts that we have right now coalesce and what's the level of coordination was to be from the group. With the release of our Sustainable Community Strategy Plan Bay Area, we released a set of forecasts for the next 30 years. And that's one effort. There has been another set of numbers on the speed, the DOF population projections that were released a month ago. And as some of you know, we have the regional housing need allocation effort going on for the Bay Area right now. We concluded our appeals process actually yesterday, and we're moving forward towards the final adoption of our regional housing allocation over the next couple of months. So we had part of this conversation at our executive board, ABAG Executive Board, and multiple questions were raised, and our board requested that we assemble a short presentation so we can clarify the differences and get a better understanding of the assumptions under each number. So what we will do right now is proceed as our president indicated with short presentation and address your questions after that. So we'll start with housing and community development.
Great. Good afternoon. Again, my name is Lisa Bates. I'm the deputy director for the Policy Division at HCD. I did want to introduce Glenn Campura, our assistant director, who has been very involved in the RENA process in the past few cycles. I was asked to briefly describe the regional housing needs allocation determination process. So I'm going to do that. As you all know, RENA is a process by which the state works with the Metropolitan Planning Organization to identify housing need at a regional scale. This is the fifth cycle of RENAs that the state has undergone. The determination is now made every eight years to coincide with the regional transportation planning process. That was a result of SB 375. The intent of RENA is really to plan for adequate housing based on projected growth in the region. The process for our determination starts with Department of Finance's projections, population projections. I would note, however, that we look at a much shorter planning timeframe than the RTP process. So we're looking over an eight-year period, not a 40-year period. HCD then consults with ABAG to consider the growth projections. From that, we arrive at how many units for a region will be needed based on household formation information. We adjust for vacancies in the area. And in this cycle, because of the downturn and the economic recession, we did also consider foreclosure impact as well as high vacancy. So that was another downward adjustment that was made in this particular RENA cycle. After we've made the determination and ABAG accepts the determination, ABAG then works with its member jurisdictions to allocate the housing units that need to be planned for among its member jurisdictions, which is the process that you're in right now. We provided this determination to ABAG in February of 2012 so that they -- ABAG and you all can meet your regional transportation planning process timeframes. Once the determination has been made, we have no statutory authority to change that determination. So at this point, that is the determination, the number, which I believe is close to 188,000 units for the ABAG region, is the number that you're currently working on allocating among your member jurisdictions. So that, in a nutshell, is the process by which we go through making a determination. And again, it's in consultation with the Department of Finance as well as ABAG in coming up with that number.
Hi. I'm Walter Schworm from the Department of Finance. I'm the person primarily responsible for the population projections. This is Bill Schooling, chief of the demographic research unit at Finance. Let's talk a little bit about our 2013 population projections. We use a baseline cohort component model. This would be one where we're tracing essentially a population that exists at a single time. Census is the baseline that we use, and move it forward in time by aging them year after year and then adding births on the other side to bring it up. This population is -- can be transformed, obviously, through deaths as well, but also migration. And the cohort component model really has three primary assumptions held in it somewhere. There are assumptions about fertility, the number of births that are going to be happening on a yearly basis because they form the zero cohort or the new population that fill in behind the aging population. There are individuals who migrate both in and out. We look at a net migration value because it's what we've done, and it's rather difficult in terms of California and because of its high amount of foreign immigration and emigration to handle it on an out and in basis. That migration value is then used to add to or subtract a population of a locality of an area. And then, of course, deaths also subtract to that as well. So there's kind of a balancing equation where the population that exists today is the survive population plus births minus deaths and plus a net migration, although that net migration value could be positive or negative. And this is then carried forward in time over and over. These projections, obviously, when we put together these migration and fertility assumptions largely, we don't know anything about the future. We know something about the past, though. So we usually, in terms of the birth stuff, this follows a fairly consistent trend one way or the other, and we make some allocations for that. But fundamentally, these change over time as well. But they don't change theoretically radically, let's say it like that. So there we use four years of previous birth data, do some smoothing of that, and essentially create a fertility that forms the overall births for the model. Net migration, absence of any outside involvement to a certain extent, is largely done on historical time series by looking at previous values of net migration and previous attractiveness or unattractiveness of an area and the amount of individuals that may have moved in at that time, and then extrapolating those trends forward. So in that sense, without some additional information from the outside, the base model assumes some previous prior trend that is continuing as it goes along. And so we move these things forward based on those assumptions and end up with a population that exists at one time. This population is not a forecast, that's important to point out. It is merely a result of those assumptions. This is fundamentally what could be reasonably expected if those assumptions were to continue. And like I say, those assumptions are somewhat based on the historical past. And that's pretty much the way it goes to a certain extent. There's a little bit of Norman to a California idea as it goes along, but each county is more or less projected individually, and the sum aggregate of those counties is what forms the state population projection. So this is not a top-down method where we're deciding on a California number and disaggreging it to the counties. Rather, the counties come and pull their number up to the state number. So it's kind of how cohort component works and at least how those projections are the basis for those projections in terms of the more or less recent past.
The work that I was involved in is completely about the future. ABAG, like hundreds of other big regional planning agencies in the United States, have both the mandate and the internal purpose of looking ahead 20 to 30 years for a whole variety of transportation, land use, and housing, and economic prosperity objectives. So the work that I did, which is replicated, as I said, across the country, was to look out to 2040 and get an assessment of the amount of growth that would occur in the region. There's a fairly standard methodology for doing this, although the specific assumptions and the results can differ depending on who does it. There are two fundamental pieces to looking out in a region 30 years. The first is to begin with and base your regional assessment on the amount of U.S. population and job growth. Essentially, you want to think of two things. The U.S. is a pot of opportunities, and the regional work that I am also going to do in the country is to assess what share of that U.S. pot will come to the region. So we begin with U.S. population and labor force participation projections to get a total U.S. jobs in 2040. And then the next important consideration is the profile, as best we can determine of those jobs. Will a lot of them be in retail, or how many will be in manufacturing, how many will be in information, internet services, and the like. With that U.S. piece, the essential technical task for the regional forecast is to determine what share, looking at individual industries, what share of the national jobs that the Bay Area will get. When you get that total job number, the standard assumption is that people move into or out of regions in response to relative growth rates. So kind of the common examples you would understand is that people left Detroit when the auto industry shrunk precipitously. The auto industry didn't shrink because the people left. When the dot-com boom ended in the Bay Area, lots of people returned to foreign countries or left the region because unemployment was up. The dot-com boom didn't end. Because people left, the timing is important. And so the relative attraction of the Bay Area for migration, foreign and domestic, depends on the amount of job growth. That's the methodology. In terms of the specific assumptions, I've now had recently the opportunity to review two or three other national forecasts. And the national forecast that we used back in the fall of 2011 for the ABAG is now slightly under the consensus of how much the U.S. will grow to 2040. But it's not a big difference. At a first level, we can conclude that the U.S. growth forecast we use is in line with what people are saying now. Virtually all of the forecasts I looked at, including the one that we did, said that the high-wage growth would be led by the internet sector, by technology in general, by sectors like computer services and R&amp;D and technical scientific services, that there would be big job growth in healthcare. There isn't a lot of difference if you look at the national picture among what forecasters are saying the industry growth profile would be. So the conclusion in the ABAG growth forecast was that the Bay Area would grow slightly faster than the nation. It's not a large difference, but it is faster and kind of the 30-second soundbite to take home. Is that because if you look at some of the fast-growing industries like internet services or computer manufacturing or computer services or medical devices, you find that the Bay Area has 5% to 10% of those jobs now, although we only have 2.5% of the total jobs in the nation. So we have a strong competitive advantage in a lot of sectors that are going to grow fast. And that's basically why the Bay Area is projected to have job growth a little bit above average. If I can take a minute or two, I guess we were supposed to try and explain the differences. Okay? And Walter and Lisa can chime in. The differences between the population growth forecast that we got by looking at job growth and the one that Walter described is substantially about a difference in projected migration and then the number of births to the extra migrant women. That explains about 80 to 90% of the difference. And as Walter said, his migration numbers came based on historical trends, and ours came based on the projected job growth. I'll end with one point of, I guess, joy for ABAG is that if you look at the last two years, our ABAG growth forecast looks at 40,000 jobs a year out to 2040. I think that's the average number. We've added 92,000 jobs a year in the past two years. The Bay Area has grown by 6% in terms of total jobs in the past two years, while the nation's grown by 3%. That's a lot larger advantage than we have built in. Finally, I think, is that Chairman mentioned in one of the -- are you chairman or president?
Chairman today, but president.
Mentioned. Although these numbers are really large, and I know people in the audience have concerns about how we're going to handle those numbers, we're talking about growth rates that are substantially less than 1% a year.
Less than what? Sorry, I didn't hear you turn away from the mic. Or less than what?
1% a year for the nation where the Bay Area could grow between now and 2040. And I think we can stop there and we can take questions.
So let's -- I guess we can take our own questions when we're ready, but we'll not wait. Let's take some audience questions.
Sure. I noticed that the Department of Fin -- oh, I'm Al Dugan from Nevada. Hey, Walter, how you doing? I noticed that the ABAG numbers were 61% higher than the Department of Finance numbers. And then when I looked at Marin County, the ABAG numbers are 33,000 and the Department of Finance numbers are 6,808. So while you have a 61% difference in the Bay Area numbers, you have a 484% difference in Marin County. And I guess my question to everybody here is, do you formulate and drive it from the top-down throughout the ABAG area? Or do you have any way to address anomalies or outliers? Now, that's Mr. Levy's. Do you have any way to address anomalies or outliers when you're distributing this in ABAG?
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, see, we have microphones at either end, so for huge questions, we can line up there. And so I guess a little more detail on what some of these differences are and why they might look different.
I mean, I guess I'll let Steve gets his information out. Because I don't know that answer, but in terms of the finance answer on this one is, well, if you look at when we looked at -- when I developed the migration assumptions and a bit of, to a certain extent, the fertility assumptions for Marin County, so you look at the 2000s. I mean, I don't know anymore than, you know, the 1990s and the 2000s. And within those perspectives, Marin doesn't seem to grow a whole lot as a general base. It is a fairly old county as it is right now. Now, of course, those things could change. And indeed, if one looks at recent information, you actually have had fairly substantial population growth in the last one or two years. Maybe that suggests differing trends. That's an element I didn't quite have when I put together the original migration assumptions when I -- for that county. Like I said, ours are -- the counties are independent in the sense that I don't consider ABAG as a region, and indeed, that might be a point.
In our case, we don't address that piece because while Steve Levy addressed the regional growth forecast, it's internal within the agency that we articulate the distribution and the allocation. In our case, we do start with the regional total that gets distributed. In the case of Marin County, the growth rate that is expected for 2040 is much lower than the regional average. I think it's around 15% or so, and for the region is about 33%, 34%. So it is on the kind of lower end of the regional growth total. And also, when we look at population growth trends and as well as employment growth trends in Marin County, what we are allocating in this 30-year period is actually lower than what you have seen in the recent or longer-term path.
Marion, if you could. I think there's a lot of confusion between the RENA allocation, the numbers that we're talking about, and how they're used in Plan Bay Area environmental documents. So maybe you could explain a little bit how the different numbers are used in the different scenarios.
Thank you, Marion. We have two related but very different processes. The Plan Bay Area is a long-term plan, a long-term strategy that attempts to envision the future of the region in 30 years, and is based on local input, is based on local plans. It accommodates the expectations of the different communities throughout the region. And that is a non-binding process, meaning it's a guiding effort. It doesn't impact the general plan. In the case of the regional housing need allocation, that's a state mandate that comes with a very specific regional total that is defined by HCD. And the role of the regional agency, working in coordination with representatives from local jurisdictions, is identify what's the most appropriate approach, what's the most appropriate methodology to allocate the 188,000 units that HCD had determined is needed for the region for a much shorter time period, thus 2014 to 2022. That number informs the local housing elements. That number informs the local plans. And that's the number that the local jurisdictions need to work with in order to plan, in order to zone, in order to accommodate the needs of our future population. Does that address you?
I think, you know, the other aspect is, you know, projecting the environmental impacts, and that's the other thing that's out there, is that we're doing EIR on the Plan Bay Area. And at least from my perspective, if there's any debate about which number is higher or lower, you tend to want, I believe, to take a slightly higher number because otherwise we open ourselves to the argument that we have underestimated the environmental impacts from the plan. And so, you know, to me, that was important, understanding the differences in the numbers. Anyway, we have other questions.
Can I ask for clarification?
Oh, hey, the microphone. Well, if you can hold it, and then we'll get back to you.
Yeah. Another round.
Thank you. Peter Singleton, Noma Park. I have a couple of comments and questions. First, I want to say that I have immense respect for Mr. Levy's intellect. I do have some questions about the methodology. And no, seriously, he's a brilliant man. But these forecasts are going to be embedded in our -- this regional plan that's going to be in effect for the next 30 years. And in addition, this plan is going to be updated. I'm aware that Plan Bay Area 2 is almost completely done, and it will be announced shortly after Plan Bay Area 1 is adopted. And presumably, the new forecasts, the new forecasts that are the currently unpublished forecasts that ABAG has, from what I understand, are much higher than ABAG's current published forecasts. And the first thing is, I think that there should be some public disclosure about that before Plan Bay Area is adopted because that may affect the public debate. Now, in terms of Mr. Levy's forecast, the core of the forecast, and I understand that the shift-share model is a legitimate demographic forecasting model. That's the drop-drive forecast, population forecast. But Mr. Levy's, the core of Mr. Levy's forecast that is now ABAG's forecast for population growth in the SCS, is that the Bay Area has a relative advantage or comparative advantage in technology relative to the rest of the country, which we all in this firm, I'm sure, would agree. And thence, the Bay Area will gain jobs relative to the rest of the country for the next 30 years, and population, in fact, will skyrocket. Now, that's a very nice theory, but that same premise held for 1990 to 2010, when there was a period of sluggish job growth in the Bay Area. And in fact, I believe, based on Mr. Levy's own work, that we lost share nationally in terms of jobs margin. And so we have this assumption that jobs and population are going to skyrocket for the next 30 years, but based on a premise that I believe is flat. The second thing is, Mr. Levy and --
Excuse me. This is really a question-and-answer time. You're kind of getting selective. Do you have a question?
I'd like an explanation for the points I'm bringing. The other point is that Mr. Levy's on the record as saying ABAG's forecasts are going to go way up based on the current unpublished forecast, based on the skyrocketing jobs in the Bay Area the last two years, and projecting those out for the next eight to 10 years. But this is basically a rebound from the steep job losses of the Great Recession, and projecting those out for another eight to 10 years may not be sound forecasting, especially since these will get embedded in RENA forecasts that will be mandates on all of our towns and cities. Thanks.
I'll just clarify this to the extent of the plan. This is not a plan for 30 years. In four years, we'll be back in this room or another rooms discussing and revisiting the assumptions and the premises and the policies that we're creating today. This is our first Sustainable Community Strategy. It's that 30-year horizon that we're envisioning with you, but again, this is a four-year cycle, so we'll be having this conversation. We are in the process. We just released the plans. Today, we released Environmental Impact Report. We haven't even started thinking about how we're going to be addressing the forecast for the next cycle. But as soon as we get to that and to some of the basic assumptions, we'll share with you the premises for that.
That's a pretty serious target, so I'd like to give you a chance to respond. Where are you?
He's back.
Okay. So where did you get that crock that there's some unpublished numbers floating around?
The statements that you made at the Palo Alto City of Palo Alto Regional Housing Mandate Committee, which are on videotape, that ABAG's current unpublished forecasts are running much higher than ABAG's current published forecasts. So if ABAG has current unpublished forecasts that are running much higher than your current published forecasts, I would presume they exist.
That's a direct lie. I get to take that from my own city, but I don't have to take that here. What I said was what Walter said and what we said, that if we were to do the forecast again now, it might be higher. That's not an unpublished forecast. No one has started the forecast again. It's the same point that I made earlier that I'd like to repeat again, which is, right now, the Bay Area is running ahead in migration, in population growth, and in job growth compared to the DOF forecast and compared to our forecast. In three years, when we begin to redo it, two or three years, we'll see whether that continues. But -- continues. But there is no unpublished forecast. What I was talking about was the last two years. And I believe if you read the one-page handout, it has a couple of relevant points. One is, DOF has new fertility and mortality assumptions. When ABAG redoes their plan, they will use them. We used them as the most current when we did the plan. These are lower. I suspect when we redo the plan, ABAG will have about 100,000 fewer children in 2040 than we currently estimate. On the other hand, were DOF to redo their projections today in consultation with us and looking at the recent trends, their projections for the Bay Area would be higher. It's an important point about the relation. DOF in consultation with ABAG will incorporate the job trends into the migration. And they will end up, if we were all on a perfect timing cycle, they would end up pretty close. Is that fair statement?
They would be reasonably within. Yes, they would be reasonably close because, I mean, that is the difference. I must rely on historical trends because that's what I have. I do not have a labor demand or a job demand model. Therefore, I rely on the regional associations and other individuals at counties who do have a jobs model for their individual areas and for their individual counties to provide me with labor force numbers and migration numbers based on labor force that I then take in advisement when creating my own migration numbers. That did not really happen this time because we were just in this cycle where that input was not available at the time. And it's unfortunate because probably part of the reason we're sitting here today, but that's just the way it happened to work out. Normally, we would be, yeah, I mean, or there would be population projections ahead of time, you know, ahead of time where this one would not look so radically different as the other aspect.
Mark Chulley, Tom, these are all friends. I've worked with these people over the years. This difference, and I know how emotional it remains, is I come from a city which has healed several times and gloriously lost all of its sense of
It was a lively discussion.
But these differences are primarily an accident of time, of our getting to know each other better. Walter is new. I was new. It's not going to happen again. They're going to be very similar. There's not some huge difference once we collaborate on the pieces we agreed to collaborate on. But
And, you know, from my understanding perspective, what a lot of cities are upset about aren't really what we're trying to do in thirty years, but what happened with the RENA allocation and how come they've got ten more units or 100 more units than they had or they had expected. And those numbers were out a long time ago. I mean, long before these more recent projections. Do you want to address how those would be determined and how they were determined and how they'd be determined in the future?
Well, at least I've already explained our methodology. But I think the important point, I think Mr. Singleton's issue was, is if different forecasts and different projections were to be utilized, you know, would that have an impact on the RENA? And the answer is that yes, but it would have somewhat of an adverse impact to what you might expect. The RENA that we gave this time, which was in February 2012, was before the other information was available. So when we provided ABAG its RENA, we didn't have that robust job growth information that otherwise, were we to have had that at the time, it's likely that, as DOF said, they would have raised their projections and we would have used higher projections and provided ABAG a higher regional housing need allocation. So we didn't have the job information. So were we to have the information, it's quite likely that ABAG's RENA would be higher than it otherwise was in the past. In fact, this cycle, as I recall, the fifth RENA, 187,000, was about 25% lower than the fourth cycle. So at least in hindsight, it appears to me from what I've heard of this conversation, that HCD provided a very low regional housing need assessment based on data that was, as Steve and others have pointed out, you know, wasn't available at the same time.
Yes?
Pat Eklund, Mayor of the City of Nevada, and also have the honor of serving on the ABAG Executive Board. Two questions. One, following this track of discussion, the projection in the SES is 2.1 million and DOF's figures, I think, is 1.3 is what was promoted. Is the difference primarily the job information? And if you could explain that a little bit more and why DOF didn't have that information? My second question, yeah, deals between HCD and DOF. In the February 2012 estimate that you provided to ABAG, what year and what factors from DOF did you include? You know, what year of the projection? Some said it was 2007 data, some said 2008. I understand DOF does it more often than that. And then, why can't you, now that DOF has issued some numbers that are different than what you projected before, why can't you change it? I understand that CACOG did get legislation that allowed them to get a more accurate information. So those are the two questions. And if it doesn't come across too clearly, I'd be glad to come up and clarify the questions again.
Do you want to take the HCD questions briefly?
Sure. We used 2011 interim data from DOF. And so, had that not been available, we probably would have been stuck with the older 2007 data, which would have, again, probably realized a much higher allocation.
And then, did you change anything? Or did you just take the data that DOF took and then just use that in your projections?
Right. It's, in our model, it is an input. So population that we derive from DOF is an input. Then when we use that input and get a result, we consult with the appropriate council of governments, in this case, ABAG. And were they to provide a lower input or a substantially higher input, then we would be having a long conversation of consultation about the reasonableness of a different projection. Now, in this case, I believe ABAG, you know, was using higher numbers, which is probably evident in the forecast. So there wasn't much at that time, again, because we had the oldest data available, there wasn't much point in our trying to look for reasonableness, you know, with different methodologies and different periods of time for data. And so, ABAG was fine with agreeing with our allocation, which, as I emphasized, probably now in hindsight, looks like it was on the low side. So that's that input. I think your last question was had to do with, are we doing or revising? Just as you pointed out, there has been one region, the Sacramento Council of Governments in 2006, that needed legislation to update its projections based upon recent updated census information. So there's no statutory authority for HCD to redo a RENA or a regional housing need allocation. It would require a statutory authority. And given that that was in 2006, and now that the law has been changed again to link regional housing need RENA with transportation planning in SB 375 and RTP's, regional transportation plan, excuse me if I use too many acronyms here. So there's, that legislation would be moved today because now, RENA does not have its own cyclical timeframes, which could be changed by legislation. Now, they are tied to federal requirements, regional transportation plan updates, and so forth. So.
Karen, let me try on both ones. I've been a consultant to two consultations with Glenn and HCD for CACOG and SCAG. For CACOG in 2010, not the 2006 one that you were talking with. In both of them, the regional agency came with brand-new job growth and population forecasts. And in that process, Glenn and Handa and the then-director Kathy Kreswell brought the DOF people in a room and the three parties sat down. And I believe it's fair, Glenn, they reached an agreement that was mutual among the parties.
Right, a consultation and consensus.
With all three parties. It wasn't just CACOG and HCD. HCD had DOF in the room. So, and that's what we hope will go forward. You also asked, I think, why were we different? All right.
The two point line versus
Yeah. Numerically, there are three pots of differences. There's a difference in the net migration number. And there are two differences in the births. One is because there are fewer migrants, there are fewer women of childbearing age, and so there are fewer births that way. And the second is that DOF had much newer information about general fertility. So there were slightly lower birth rates for all women. All right? That last one would stay. As I said, if we knew now the new fertility rates, we would have incorporated them in the ABAG constellation, even with our job numbers would be about 100,000 less. Okay. The migration numbers are the ones that DOF had, imply a very sharply lower level of job growth. Now, they didn't look at it that way, but if you, if you translate it that way, if there are 800,000 fewer people, that would mean that the Bay Area was basically a recessionary job growth region for the next thirty years. The difference is that we looked at job growth. Again, going forward, we would be talking more closely, the timing would be aligned. One of these things is to get the timing aligned for all of this and the people aren't doing different vintages. And there wouldn't be very much of a difference. We would take their fertility rates, they would look at our job growth rates for the migration. The ethnic competition would be strictly DOF.
So your comment about you didn't have that economic data available.
Right.
So why wasn't it available to help to call away to ABAG? And having worked with the feds for 43 years, I know that sometimes it's hard to reach out to other organizations, but
We give out a survey and I have several conversations with members of the ABAG staff. But at that particular point in time, the numbers, because ultimately, you know, if you're vague or something so much vague, but a general idea about what's happening in the Bay Area is not quite enough. I need to look at some numbers so that I can take those numbers and look at my numbers and see whether I see similar things with them and whether I believe that, you know, that they have a reasonable. And then go back and talk to somebody about why they feel that their numbers are better. I mean, and that's this consulting process that we have is, I would project, say, 10,000, you're looking at 18,000. Why do, what factors do you see that make this county or the Bay Area so much more attractive than the numbers that I have? Because I, as Steve points out, have really only the past to look at. And unfortunately, you know, I can temper the past and think, well, that's probably not, but I, you know, if I can't, if I'm not tempering the past, then I'm just making up numbers. And, you know, that's one way to work it as well. But then it's difficult to scum up here and say, well, my made-up numbers were just different. They're based on looking at historical trends. And then, you know, you can do some smoothing of those trends to look at things. And one of those consultative processes is to look at somebody else's numbers that involve a different model, in this case, labor force participation model, and take those and use those as a guide to what some other component of the, essentially what the, what the future economic forecast is saying and see whether that jives with what the past one has said. Because there I have past economic performance. I can look at that economic performance in migration and look at the new economic performance in labor force and see whether that jives well with migration, in migration, I find to put it. So there's a piece that's missing. And it's unfortunate that if neither of us had that piece fully in place at this particular point in time, it was some, we had some vague idea about what it would be, but not particularly in the later years to the level that is necessary to fully inform these projections. There's also this timing issue in terms of the first couple of years. Largely, I, the earliest, or sorry, the latest possible data I had was probably mid-2011 when I did the migration assumptions. So the relatively stronger job growth and advantage to the Bay Area that's had in the last year and a half, 18 months, they're not incorporated within my model. And that's just the way it goes. I guess it could play the other thing is, these models do change. It's going back to this original day with changing. If you looked at our '92 series, we've been sitting in a California with 50 million people right now. That was based on the historical growth of the 80s. That was a perfectly valid, reasonable model at that particular point in time. When the next ones were done a couple of years later, no, that number came down. At this point, you know, given the Great Recession and various other aspects, this seems a reasonable-ish number to me, even though I admit, were I to do it now with the new job numbers, I would certainly be giving the Bay Area more population than it had in that, than I did in this particular thing because the numbers look better in the Bay Area than they do visibly the rest of California and visibly the United States as well in terms of that aspect.
But you'd be at 2.1?
I cannot say where I'd be without it because, remember, I don't believe you'd be at 2.1 either with the fertility assumptions.
We'd be at 2.0 or something.
Yeah, you'd be lower as well.
Let me make the timing issue a lot more clear and also respond to what I said in Palo Alto. In December of 2012, which was way after we did our analysis and really way after you did yours, although you published it in January 13.
Yeah, we did ours in 2011. We did ours, our RENA in 2011 because that is February 2012.
In December of 2012, a couple of months ago, DOF announced that the annual migration to the Bay Area had been 20,000 a year for the first few years of the decade. They had previously projected 5,000 a year. All right? On March 6th, I think, of this year, the Census Bureau announced that they estimated the annual migration for the first two years of the decade to be 44,000 a year. When I went to Palo Alto, when I talked to Miriam, I said that all of us would have had to take into account the fact that jobs and population and migration in these last two years are just surging ahead. That doesn't mean we say they're going to surge ahead for 40 years, but they are a piece of historical information that we know now that none of us had when we did our work. And if anything, they point higher, not lower. I think that's all of your
Yeah. I mean, a lot because they represent base population.
And that's what I said in Palo Alto, that the numbers for the first two years are running higher.
Yes, I mean, it's really about how we take the cycles. We know in our society, in our economy, we go through periods of kind of peaks and valleys. And I think the methodology that DOF has used is solid for what it attempts to do. The challenge in the Bay Area compared to many of the other regions in California is that between 2000 and 2010, we did pretty bad in terms of the economy goals. We, that's when we lost all the jobs that we gained through the dot-com boom and then more. And within that, we have two recessions. Is that the future that we expect over the next thirty years? Probably not. Is the future is like these two years when we are gaining lots of jobs and population? Probably not. So our attempt here is to figure out what's the set of assumptions that can give us a reasonable path, a healthy path, a path that can accommodate healthy economic growth, the population that relates to that, and the housing that is required to that way and forth.
Do you have a question?
Thank you very much. I want to, first of all, thank you all for coming here. I think this is, appreciate everyone being here. And I think that one of the wonderful results of SB 375 is it has taken what is in the past been a sort of technical discussion between city managers and ABAG and HCD and created the opportunity for the public to be engaged in this process in terms of how we as a region want to evolve, how we are planning for the future, our region, for our children and our grandchildren. And I guess what I'd love to do is ask our colleagues here from HCD, one of the, one of the things that's come up during the conversations with members of our communities is, help us understand with members of our communities is, help us understand what RENA is. And part of it is, and I know that most of the people in the inner probably have an understanding of that, we are today having a pretty high-level technical discussion about some of the differences in how we get the projections and how we base our numbers. But I wonder if you could just give a little snapshot. You mentioned that we are in our fifth cycle. Is what were the, sort of, some of the philosophical underpinnings when this, when the California, the cities and the counties came together to develop this concept of the fair share housing, allocation of housing across the state, across all levels of income for housing? And just give us a snapshot. I think it would be really helpful as we go into our communities to answer kind of some of those fundamental questions that people are asking.
Well, I'll start. I've been with this again for six months, but I'm glad I'll add that. Having come from the local community prior to that, I'm familiar with this process. You know, it really is about how do we adequately plan for our regions? And the underpinnings that we need to have enough housing to accommodate the growth within California, and that that housing has to be available for all income levels. And so, I mean, it's almost as simple as that. There are underpinnings related to federal fair housing law. So there's long history in terms of the need to make sure that there are not exclusionary policies or activities in place within communities. And so, RENA does have some basis in overall fair housing, meaning that we need to make sure that the housing is distributed across the communities and in the region in a fair and equitable manner. So the opportunity to have this conversation is now every eight years, timed with the RTP process, and to more closely align with your transportation investments. And so, that's probably the simplest answer, but I'll let Glenn.
Well, I'll try to be brief, but I also try to bring it home to a different level. There are many planning processes that the state and regions and cities, you know, view as critical. And it's around basic services. So obviously, housing is a basic service. And so, the state's goal is to make sure that its population is adequately housed. So hence the planning requirement. State does regional planning and tries to project future housing need. The regions then try to project where that housing need should be planned for. And I want to emphasize planned for as opposed to produced. So it's, so should the private market respond and say, you know, job growth is going to be in your particular city? You know, that importer doesn't want to wait two to five years for a housing plan to go through all the city council and the zoning and all that. They want to be able to call up a developer and say, how long is it going to take to have my employees housed? And it's, I mean, think about it in another context. School districts use Department of Finance information. Why? To plan long-term for where the children are going to grow up and need schools. Housing is just like that. It's a necessity. It needs to be planned for. And should the private market need to respond quickly, then your local, your local government plans already have it zoned, already have it identified. And it's like a budget. If you don't consume it and doesn't get produced, it's like a budget. You carry it over until the next planning cycle, where if it's needed, it's still there. And it's always easier to plan now and identify and zone in the event that private market says, we'd like to put housing there. And I said, the planning requirement. And if you don't use it, the next cycle, you're always going to have growth. Why? Because we populate. So it's, as I said, it's a necessity. The state tries to assist local governments and regions as far as assisting them with the planning requirement. In our particular case, we do the housing. School districts do, you know, elementary schools and so forth. And California Energy Commission, you know, plans population growth around power plants. It's all related around essential services that every one of us needs. Maybe not for ourselves, but for our children, our grandchildren, our employees. And if you don't expect more of those, then you can expect economic decline and not economic growth. And most communities want economic growth. And that requires population, housing, and services.
I can add it just from our policy level. I think as we've looked at these numbers, it was really a decision, do we plan for recession or do we plan for growth? And I think that the growth projections that we are anticipating are not unrealistic. I think I calculated an 0.86% straight-line appreciation of population between now and 2040, which is less than the 1% growth we've seen in the United States. And you really got to believe that California is not Michigan, although Michigan's turning around. But, you know, that there is kind of, just from the world market and the intellectual capital that's here in our Bay Area and Southern California, that this is going to be an economic driver, and that we're probably underestimating what it is that could happen here. But the thing is, if we plan for recession, if we say, no, we don't need housing in this area, we're not going to plan for housing in this area, then it will be a self-fulfilling prophecy. I mean, then there isn't room for growth. Companies will find other places to go. And we won't see the economic vitality that we need and want in our communities. I particularly appreciate the Plan Bay Area process, because as we add, you know, it seems like a big number, 2.1 million on top of the 7 million that are coming or that are already here. And yet, that's a relatively low population growth rate. And so, then there, so it's a very legitimate question. Where do 2.1 million people fit in this Bay Area? And so, the approaches we have with higher density, near transit, near jobs, making a better connection between jobs, housing, and transit, is really not just a nice idea, it's an absolute necessity. And this plan is approaching that. And more than that, this plan approaches it from the grassroots. It asks you, the city managers, city council, or supervisors, where in your community do you see this happening? Knowing what our priorities are. And how do we connect transit to do that? And ultimately, how do we come up with the funding to help support the development in those... As you back away from it, the numbers are very reasonable. If anything, they underestimate. But it's certainly a good target to shoot for. And they are planned. They won't happen unless developers come in and build the housing, unless the jobs do show up, which drives the housing. And so, it's a plan. And it's a good plan, because if we don't do what we're doing, it's just going to be gridlocked. And so, it is gridlocked. We hope it'd be not as bad as it could be. So that, you know, all said and done, I think, you know, we're on the right track. And I think we need to see how we can make this plan, which for me, for the really first time in these RENA cycle, I think we really have a plan. It's not just distribution of housing. It's actually a plan for how to do it well. So having said all that, the question we hear is, well, maybe if we left ABAG, we would have a lower housing allocation. Is that a possibility? I guess that's directed that end of the table.
You would have a different allocation.
But can you talk about how that would be done? Glenn, I think that's important for folks to hear.
Want to address your question first? Is it similar?
Well, I'm the mayor of Corder Maderas. I'd love to hear your answer.
Well, I think I just have to describe the methodology. I can't give you the answer. HCD is the equivalent of a council of governments for counties not represented by council of governments. And so, or ABAG not to be here. In effect, the COG, Council of Governments, for each county. And so, for many counties, rural counties mostly, where HCD is the council of governments, we obviously do the RENA, you know, the same way. And then we do the distribution. Okay? And so, of course, we're dealing in a much smaller area than a region. And so, and so, we have some options. And we can, we consult with individual cities. Typically, there's not a lot of cities in these small counties. And we try, we give them a draft of a distribution and so forth, and we talk about, you know, is this adequate and so forth? But the methodology that we use is, you know, is not at all sophisticated in a modeling sense. So we usually provide RENA allocations based on a proportion of city population to the county. And, you know, there's some issues with that, because it doesn't forecast where the growth is going to occur on one end of the county or not. And so, you know, it has limitations. But I mean, that's very rudimentary, you know, it's system. We do on a proportion of housing. Further, some of you not to be represented by ABAG, then for your individual counties, it would be based on your county population. I would give that information to the Department of Finance, just like I do now. And I aggregate it, you know, multiple counties. And then through ABAG's process, which we would be doing, ABAG convenes with its local government officials and determines a methodology committee that in other regions of the state serve those regions very well, because you folks know your backyard is better than myself at the Capitol, you know, trying to determine where this RENA is going to go for COGS not represented by council of governments. So, so as I said, if there was a single county in this region that we would, the COG for, would be based on population. And my sense of having dealt with ABAG and other regions, you know, through many of these processes, those counties that are further out from metropolitan, urban, and job-centered areas, typically, in those kind of regions, they are getting a smaller growth, because those regions are trying to put the housing closer to the jobs. Whereas my methodology, in rural counties and so forth, there's not that robust job component in an urban area. And so, the distribution, you know, is more based upon existing housing patterns of those cities. So typically, proportionate share basis, those smaller jurisdictions might end up with an overall higher percentage of RENA than what might happen in a region who's trying to focus on jobs with housing.
An industrial site, it was a Starbucks cup factory that closed. So we are taking a four-and-a-half-acre industrial site in the heart of Central Marin, right by the freeway, that would have been a perfect location for potentially green tech, biotech, or some other kind of firm. And we had to change that to housing in order to meet our RENA numbers. And then we found out after the fact from ABAG, and Mr. Luce, you were there, that our RENA number was incorrect, that a mistake had been made. And if you look at the first five scenarios for Plan Bay Area, you'll see that the numbers for our town went down quite a bit, because they realized that there was something in the calculation they had not taken into consideration or whatever. I've been in communication with the regional planner on this, and I still don't know exactly what the change is. But you need to be careful about those law, the law of unintended consequences and what you're doing. And I would urge you to be conservative with how you look at some of this stuff and really take into consideration what it means for the individual communities. But again, I'm not intended on speaking to that. I actually just wanted to talk about, I have a few questions. First of all, I'm kind of curious if you calculate the birth rate by county or city, or just apply a region-wide number for the migrants and the general fertility for the population? And I'm also kind of curious if you guys are tracking the number of persons per household? And finally, I'm wondering what's going on on the front of the types of housing that count towards RENA numbers? I know those are had definitions. But in Marin, which is a very affluent, you know, pretty affluent area that has very high cost of housing, we are now seeing market rate, and then we're seeing affordable. But we're missing out on that middle piece. We're missing out on things like assisted living, starter homes, starter condos. Because the market rate is too extensive for most people starting now. There are probably, you know, a lot of young professionals are not going to qualify to be affordable. But we're not building anything in that center range. So I'm kind of curious if you would, um, addressing that. Thanks.
I'll start with the birth rate, with the fertility ratio of ones. No, it's, at least initially, in terms of the near term, and this would account for a number of years into the projection, I calculate fertility rates by county.
By what?
By county. The fertility, the projection by time comes to the end, 2060 in terms of this one, but 2045 is technically when they were normed. I then norm them over time to a state norm, because we don't know how that county is going to change. I mean, some of them, San Francisco and a few other ones, are held more or less to the lower rate, because they historically always had a lower rate. But the rest of the counties, which have some variability, can be above the state rate, below the state rate, they're allowed to norm up from the historical four-year average to the state rate over time. And that takes, well, as opposed to, this time, 2045 is when I normed everything fully into the state. So, and that's done also, of course, by race and ethnicity as well. So there's, that's broken into all of the race and ethnicity groups that the projection is looking at. So, and that's based all on historical biostatistics data from the Department of Health in terms of the births.
I mean, we track household population, number of members of that house.
The persons per household and type of housing, that's more HCD's proposal, because I don't, well, we don't have household projections currently.
Right. But DOF and ourselves do have information on persons per household, and it comes from just the annual data that local governments report on when they approve building permits and so forth. So local governments, you know, provide data to Department of Finance and that HCD uses, you know, as far as an increase in the housing stock when they issue a building permit and it gets built and so forth. And then, of course, it's a very easy calculation based upon population, you know, city population, you know, by number of units to come up with a figure that is persons per household. And you can find that information on the Department of Finance's website. It's called the E5. You know, they have persons per household. And it's just, you know, a measurement, I guess, or benchmark criteria that HCD uses quite a bit to determine overcrowding and whether there's enough units. If you see more persons per household, it indicates a restrictive, you know, housing supply and perhaps overcrowding, and so we get concerned about those things. But again, we just use it just for information purposes. And I don't know if that answers your question. That's how you wanted to use it, but...
Well, I'm just kind of curious if there are trends that were incorporated in Plan Bay Area? Because, you know, I'm just anecdotally, I see college graduates moving back in with their parents at much higher rates than they did, you know, when I was younger. And I think that's more of a result of the unemployment situation or perhaps stagnant wages. So I'm kind of curious how that entered into the projections? And does that maybe also has entered any variance between Mr. Levy's projection and that of the Department of Finance?
We have addressed some of those recent trends to some extent. So the one that you mentioned is one that is emerging, and it can be captured to some extent. As Walter was indicating, we rather rely on historical data where we have multiple years, if not multiple decades, that we can rely upon. However, we cannot ignore emerging trends that are going to be staying with the trend for the future. So we have taken some of that into account. We are also taking into account the aging of the population, as you made reference to. Two-thirds of our population in the Bay Area is expected to be senior population over 65. There are several questions that remain to be addressed more specifically, and we're working with the local jurisdictions to sort out some of the more concise elements at the local level. How are we going to house our senior population? What kind of incentives can be provided to the middle-income group? That, as you pointed out, there are several jurisdictions that are struggling with that same challenge. The market is producing for about modern, and there is some effort for the low and very low. And the sector in the middle faces different challenges that needs to be articulated. We are assessing what the rehab of existing units can provide in addressing some of the housing needs. Again, with the aging of our population, and after 2030, we're expecting that then there is some contraction of the senior population as we step out of this world. And so, there is some availability of existing stock that will need to reassess how that gets used or occupied by other income groups. that gets, uh, used or, or occupied by other income groups.
I think it's really hard, um, particularly when there's an emotional issue like the arena, to think about how 2040 can be different from now. The, the direct answer is that no one that I know that does this work is expecting 2040 to be a horrible recession year. And so the phenomena that we just went through where children moved back in is absolutely not expected in 2020 or 2025 or 2040. My name has been used nicely and sometimes differently, but I think it's important for everyone to understand that, for example, the UCLA forecast and the Bay Area Economic Institute's forecast have the Bay Area growing faster than the nation for the same reason. I've explained, I review lots of national forecasts, and so you can call it Mr. Levy's forecast, we did it in consultation, but it's not that there would be a different answer about how people in my field assess the relative strength of this economy to grow a little bit faster than the nation. So it's not just me. It would have been UCLA if you had hired them, it would have been Moody's if you had hired them. It's a pretty standard thinking about the Bay Area. We could all be wrong, but as the President said, we could also all be wrong by being low. Um, the fact that we could be wrong doesn't take away from that this A-BAG growth forecast is based on a universal assumption of a moderately prosperous, non-recession economy in which the Bay Area does a little better. Um, I know for my city, um, as a resident, I'd love to see the housing, but as a regional economist, if Mountain View or Redwood City or Menlo Park would agree to swap for my housing, that would make the regional economy work. The housing that comes out of the work that we do at the regional level is a regional necessity. It doesn't speak to what any individual city should do. That's the arena allocation process and all of the members working hard. But at a regional level, regional economies need that housing. That's what any business group would say, that's what, um, you said. But as to the specific allocation, I don't have anything to do with that, and I understand people's feelings.
This gentleman's been very patient.
I'm Robert McCollum, I'm the Director of Planning for the Slalto Transportation Authority. I have two questions. The first is for Dr. Levy. In your report to, um, A-BAG, you talked about how using growth as the primary determinant of regional population growth is used by Moody's, sounds like UCLA, SCAC, Sandag. Wondering, have, have they been doing that for long enough, you can now look back at their numbers and say, have they been more accurate, as accurate less than any of the other forecasting? I'd just like to know what their experience is. And then my other question, I think is more for State Department of Finance, if we have a situation where at the regional level, we're making housing and transportation investments based on one number, which comes out of the, the Plan Bay Area, but the state has groups like healthcare and power, uh, agencies that are making projections that I assume are based on the DOF numbers, what are the implications for having those two, at this point somewhat divergent numbers being used for forecasts that then different government layers are, are basing their actions upon? Thank you.
Okay, so answer to the first question is that, um, the people cited in the report that use this kind of common methodology have been doing that for 30 years. Okay, it is a common methodology. They all don't agree on, say, how California will fare relative to the nation, but they all get California's population by looking at its share of jobs of the nation. They all do it with the same way of thinking. Um, we were all geniuses from 1960 to 1990. As I often told my clients, um, you don't need to pay a lot of money, California's going to grow faster than the nation, and here's the back of the envelope number. About 1990, um, California became an average growth state from an above-average growth state, and it took all of us a while to realize after the aerospace downturn and the base closing that this was a more permanent transition to a average or a little bit average above growth state. Um, I can't say that we were all right, and I certainly don't know if anyone did slightly better than the others, but we're all saying roughly the same thing now. It's kind of, you're stuck with this all being right or all being wrong, but there's not a great divergence, um, among people. We're saying that California is going to be maybe average or a little bit above average, rebound and then be average, um, but the rebound does count. And the Bay Area has emerged as a slightly above-average area, say, compared to Southern California or, um, you know, Sacramento's growth forecast is going to be lower than it was before because the government sector has been hit pretty hard. I don't know whether that completely answers the, the part of the question, but that's what I know.
Okay. In terms of my section of the question about the divergence in the relative, uh, population projections, um, I think, and I can't speak for state agencies, I mean, to a certain extent, the projections I produce by government code are supposed to be the official ones, but that says you have to look at them. I do know that Department of Transportation and Energy and various other people then take of them and do their own transformations, do their own high series, low series, and et cetera on them, and may use that for their own planning purposes based on how realistic they think mine are. So mine is the starting point, other people can, and when it gets to sticky, sticky details, but those are usually only in the next budget year, after the next budget year, or if somebody, you know, so in other words, they're in code, they have to be used for certain things, but those tend to be things that are only within a one-year budget or, you know, within a very near-term budget cycle. So when they look at my 2040 number, they look at A-BAG's 2040 number, and they go, oh, there's kind of a difference here, um, let's create a couple of series of, of very different alternatives, and they'll internally use those, uh, for their own work. So that's, that's at least the way this usually works, largely or potentially because, um, in the past, and we may be changing that, but in the past, we only really gave our projections relatively infrequently. There was a good four years, in this case, seven years, between the last projection cycle and the current, current one. Um, and try, or we will probably be doing things much quicker in, in the future, perhaps every two years from here on. And that's another thing that, that goes with Steve's comment, the next projection series will look different because there'll be the new data, there'll be a conversation with A-BAG and various other people, and, um, there'll also be my own further research in terms of what I feel the ongoing trends are in California and whether we've changed. So hopefully, I would suppose, with a more recent projection series, um, other agencies would, or more, 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 more current projection series like that, coming out every once in a while, every two years, um, other state agencies would find it less necessary to create alternatives because they would see, um, I mean, part, part of the reason they created alternatives is after seven years, it's clear that the old seven series was, you know, way too high. They may, after, you know, a, a year of looking at these, decide these are way too low. It's just the way it goes, unfortunately. There are a point of time, and that point of time is very specific to approximately when I put together the assumptions.
I'm seeing we have a couple more questions. I'm looking at sort of closing our discussion time at four o'clock, about seven minutes. So if you haven't asked a question, maybe you could cut to the front of the line and, uh, and get your question in, and then we'll get as far as we can, and then we'll break it four, and, and hopefully you'll get a chance to visit one-on-one. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Tim Frank with the Center for Sustainable Neighborhoods, and I have two quick questions. Uh, the first looks at the overall numbers and looking at historical trends. If you look at the, uh, the, the last real estate recession that was as large as this one, um, and you look at what happened when that recession resolved, there was actually a big boom in housing. I'm wondering if, uh, we can expect that, if you think we can expect the same thing now and should plan for that. Um, and then the second question I have is on a different question. It's about, it's about the actual distribution within the region, and that's regarding what you see as the fair share implications of basing arena on something, uh, other than household formation rates.
I'll take the first one, you can take the second one. The most important finding, uncontested finding of Plan Bay Area for housing is the dramatic demographic shifts. Most of the household formation will be people in my age group, and the question is, will they stay in the house when the kids leave? We didn't. Or will they move downtown to a nine-story building that's completely walkable? We did, but I don't know how others. And for the immediate arena period, a bump up in young 25 to 34-year-old people. So the biggest change that the market is going to bring is in concert with the plan. The market is going to ask for smaller, more walkable units because those are the people forming households. Um, what was the first part of the, the question?
Oh, you mean, I was just asking about the, the likelihood that you will actually have a reaction to the end of the recession.
Right, okay.
With a, a boost in household formation.
There's a, there's an interaction between the goal of the arena, which is to have cities' plan so that if such demand comes, there will be space, and what will actually happen? So I've told my city, which I think is typical of many cities, that over the next eight years, developers will build and sell easily every home that they could make available in places like Palo Alto and in downtown around the region. There is a connection between the city's ability to plan for these units. I think the demand will be there, not forever, uh, hopefully not like the boom in 2007, but for this particular market of units for older, oh, hate to say that, older and very young couples, not family couples, in walkable areas. It's not just the only single-family homes, but to the extent that those downtowns and transit thoroughfares are made available for housing, the market will be there, would be my guess. That's the next of the, the struggle you're dealing with.
The fair housing distribution, I think Amy and Glenn have explained or addressed this period of the legislation and why we have arena. Why do we use something else beyond household formation? That was a result of a conversation at the Housing Methodology Committee. Are there different ways to do it? There are multiple ways to do it. In this case, just to simplify the response, um, the, the group of people that sat around the table thought that jobs was an important component to take into account, given the efforts towards sustainability, transit and transit access is an important component. And the third component, major component that was addressed is how the cities were addressing their responsibilities. That's how it ended up being framed at this last arena discussion.
My name is Pam Drew, and I'm from Nauvoo. And I came in a half an hour late, so I hope the question hasn't been raised yet. 2.1 million compared to 1.3 million is 60% higher. And whenever you have predictions or projections, uh, competing projections that differ by 60%, it does not say much for the reliability of the projection. Now, I know you folks do the very best you can with what you have, and, uh, we've been dealing with a difficult recession, and I know that all of this is being driven by the idea of the economy and most particularly by multinational corporations' view of the economy. However, if you were God and you said the Bay Area has to make room for 2.1 million people, you would be believed. But if you're not God and you've been saying that to the entire Bay Area, I have been told over and over again, if you're a citizen of the Bay Area, you have to make room for 2.1 million people, as if it were taken from some holy book or from something that was really certain. This is not true at all. And in your publications for the people, would you tell them the truth about the reliability?
Like, sure, again, should you frame that in the form of a question?
Could you, when you are speaking to the people of the Bay Area, tell them the limits of reliability? Tell them how uncertain this projection really is? Tell them how often the projection is going to be arrived? And tell them the same thing that you just said, you know, sometimes you're wrong, and if you're wrong, that's just the way it goes.
Want to speak to reliability revisiting?
I think Steve already addressed a response to your question in terms of the difference between 2.1 and the 1.3 million people. Um, so I, I can follow up with you after the meeting is over, if, to provide you more details. But on your point about, shall we tell people what are the basic assumptions behind the projection? Yes, of course, and we'll make sure that we have the appropriate information that explains what are the underlying assumptions for this, uh, forecast? What are the expectations in terms of the economic health of the region that drive the 2.1 million people? Uh, what, what are the levels of, uh, uncertainty that are related to this projection? This is a projection, we'll be revisiting this in four years, and I agree with you that we need to explain those components when we go to the workshop.
And we have not been done so far.
Why don't we take your question and your question, and we'll answer those, and then we can break and quickly ask some questions if you have.
Okay, well, I think I also have a right to respond to something that Ms. Levy said and Ms. Chen said. The first is that, uh, Mr. Levy did say on January 31st and March 14th that A-BAG has a currently unpublished forecast, and I'd be happy to divide those to Mayor Worth or Supervisor Luiz, if you like. And then Ms. Chen said.
I only say I haven't seen this.
Okay. And, and Ms. 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 Chen said that, uh, A-BAG has not even begun to think about Plan Bay Area Two or the next RTP. But Ms. Chen was with Mr. Rapport on November 8th in St. Carlos, meeting with a group of San, San Mateo County elected officials. And Mr. Rapport said, "We are more than halfway done with Plan Bay Area Two for the next RTP." So there's a discrepancy in the facts there. In addition, I wanted to point out the point I made about, uh, Mr. Levy basing his forecast on outsized growth in population and jobs of the Bay Area for the next three decades based on a comparative advantage in technology relative to the rest of the country, hence skyrocketing jobs and, and population. It sounds like Mr. Schwarm is preparing to adopt that, uh, you know, assumption in, in the DOS forecast and will be releasing an extract of the DOF forecast within a couple of years. I think there should be a conversation within the, the Bay Area, including within public, about basing our forecasts on the assumption that we're going to gain jobs relative to the rest of the country because of our technology advantage, because that has helped for the last two decades of period of sluggish job growth.
Thanks, thank you.
Uh, two quick questions. Uh, I think, did A-BAG use the 2007 migration? Uh, okay, so you basically used the migration before the bubble burst?
What?
Sorry, the 2007.
No. A-BAG, not you, Doc, the A-BAG. The 2007 migration numbers were used?
What we use from DOF is the demographic assumptions in terms of fertility and mortality as well as the ethnic composition. Those are the two components that we use.
And that was from 2007?
Correct.
Okay. And the last question is, I'm just trying to understand how the jobs slowed down. And so, uh, Doc, Dr. Levy, this is for you. You start with the national, then you look at the Bay. Uh, how does Navado and, and How does Navarro and Marin County end up with 18,000 jobs? How does that come down just as, as simple as possible?
One, the migration and population numbers in the regional forecasts were based on jobs. They had nothing to do with DOF at any minute. Second, Miriam can talk to that after the break. My responsibility was to get the regional total. The work that I did had nothing to do with allocating jobs or population to any county or city. That was done by the staff and they should be the ones that discuss that.
Thank you. Do you want to say it briefly?
Yeah. So the, we start with the regional total, and you're talking about jobs in Nevada.
Oh, not jobs.
There are, it's a very kind of simple approach. The areas, the employment areas that have a concentration of knowledge-based jobs are expected to increase the concentration slightly. The areas that have primarily population-serving jobs, meaning restaurants or healthcare services or schools, the job growth remains in the same pattern in relation to the population growth.
Do you have this as a formula somewhere?
It is described in the technical documents related to the draft Plan Bay Area. You can access the description of the methodology, and I think I have a draft here that I can share with you.
I mean, do you have a worksheet that shows the flow of the numbers? Okay. Thank you.
Can you actually see the formulas? Because I know I've seen some, I don't know if it was green calculations online. You posted the, the spreadsheet, but you can't actually look at the formulas. It won't allow you to put your cursor over the formulas.
Correct. What you have is the description of the methodology, the factors and how the factors apply in each city. We have multiple calculations, calculation worksheets that if you're interested, we can follow that online.
And just to clarify, I'm not, I know we're in the middle of an environment impact report on Plan Bay Area, and I can only guess it may have been what Ezra was referring to, but we haven't finished, we haven't, we've just begun that, and so we're not anywhere near starting round two. I'm not aware of that. So, so I don't know, I sometimes I think that just either miscommunication or unintended miscommunication, one or the other. But thank you for being here, and if you can stay, you're welcome. If you can't, we understand, but thank you for your time and your presence. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all.